Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barley, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. As we gather tonight, we mourn with the families in Georgia at yet another tragic school shooting and offer a moment of silence to recognize both the loss of life and acknowledge the ongoing evil of gun violence in our country. We also gather tonight with humility and faith, thankful for all of the blessings and mindful of all of the challenges in our own community. We celebrate the honor and privilege of work as we remember Labor Day. We celebrate the possibilities of a new school year and ask for blessings and safety for our students, teachers, staff, and leadership at all of our Suffolk schools. We ask for guidance and strength, for courage and wisdom as we meet tonight. Help us to remember to act in love and with grace in service to our city, remembering the needs of our neighbors and treating all people as we would want to be treated. Give us patience and understanding to face the challenges of these days with grace. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the June 5th, 2024 work session and regular meeting is the next item for consideration. A motion would be in order. Council, Councilman Fawcett?
I'll move to approve, Mayor.
And a motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one special presentation this evening, which is a proclamation in recognition of National Forensic Science Week. Mr. Manager, please present the overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, tonight's proclamation is in recognition of National Forensic Science Week, which extends from September 15th through September 21st and is served across Commonwealth and throughout the country. With us this evening to accept the proclamation and provide some remarks is Police Chief Danny Billy and members of the Suffolk Police Forensic Unit. Chief?
Madam Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas access to state-of-the-art forensic analysis significantly improves the investigation of criminal activity, aiding in the exoneration of the innocent and the prosecution of the guilty. And whereas crime scene investigators and forensic technicians with the Suffolk Police Department and law enforcement agencies across the Commonwealth locate, recognize, document, collect, preserve, and properly package items of physical evidence for examination. And whereas professional organizations across the nation recognize and celebrate National Forensic Science Week. And whereas the City of Suffolk's forensic science community is recognized and appreciated for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to providing quality and unbiased scientific analysis and testimony in support of the cause of justice. Now therefore, I, Michael Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim September the 15th, 2024 through September the 21st, 2024, as National Forensic Science Week in Suffolk, Virginia, and call upon all residents to support this worthwhile observance and witness whereof. I am herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fourth day of September in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager. It's my honor to stand up here and accept this proclamation on behalf of our CSI unit. I tried really, really hard to have our CSI supervisor say a few words, but she says she would rather do a crime scene in a driving rainstorm than she would step up to this microphone. And I'm pretty sure she threatened me with bodily harm if I made her do it. So I just want to say that these, the men and women of our crime scene unit in the City of Suffolk, they are the unsung heroes of what goes on on the crime scene. The police, the detectives, everybody plays a role, but these women behind me are just incredible. Most crimes are solved because of what they do in the laboratory and what they do after the fact when crimes are committed. Just to give you a little preview, there's only, I believe, six of them, correct? Five and one in training, and that's including the supervisor. And in 2023, they processed 275 crime scenes. And they, in 2023, they processed 151 cellphones, which means they go into the phone, they retrieve the information out of that phone, which is a very lengthy process. And they just do it over and over and over again. This year, in 2024, so far, they have processed 138 crime scenes, and they have processed 164 cellphones. So I say all that to say this, that these people standing behind me, these are your true heroes. These are the ones that get the job done. These are the ones that you count on. When we come out in the middle of the night and we roll up on a scene and I see them there, I know things are going to be okay and things are going to be taken care of because they are the very best in the state of Virginia at what they do. So for them, I want them to know that during this week that we honor them, but at the Suffolk Police Department, we honor them every day. Thank you very much.
I can make you do that.
Y'all jump right in here. Y'all, you'll be taking the picture.
Yeah.
Alrighty, at this time, we'll consider the removal of the consent agenda item, an adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of the consent agenda item would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on a specific consent agenda item can be addressed during a consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. Council, a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
Moved to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, Councilman Rector, second. Second from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers tonight?
No, sir.
Hearing none, will you please present the consent agenda items for consideration?
Consent agenda item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the sale of right-of-way of real property adjacent to the existing Route 32 Carolina Road pursuant to the devolution agreement and to authorize the transfer of funds to capital contingency.
Mr. Manager, would you please provide an overview of the item?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to item seven, the city has received funds in the amount of $8,530 from the sale of right-of-way adjacent to the existing Route 32 Carolina Road, which is, which acquired, was acquired from the Department of Transportation through the devolution agreement in 20, excuse me, 2006. The city, along with VDOT, agreed to vacate and sell the right-of-way to the budding property owner. Per the devolution agreement, the city must dedicate and use the received funds from the sale of right-of-way for transportation purposes. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 road maintenance fund budget by the $8,350 and authorizes the transfer of the funds to the capital projects fund budget contingency.
Council, a motion would be appropriate at this time to adopt a consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
To approve, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is in ordinance authorizing the acquisition of permanent easements and/or temporary construction easements either by agreement or condemnation for the Willroy Road 12-inch water main extension Phase Two project. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, the Director of Public Utilities, Paul Retell, will provide the staff report. Paul?
I thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Mr. Manager, as the title this agenda item suggests, this is phase two of an overall project. Phase one being actually already constructed. Phase two would extend an existing phase one water main from the 2,000 block of Willroy Road, roughly at the ending right now at the executive drive by the Children's Center, and this project will run down to River Creek Drive. It's a new water main. It's approximately 3,300 linear feet of brand-new 12-inch diameter water main. It's an important project because it provides some system redundancy with a second feed going to the Old Mill Creek and Nansman Crossing subdivisions, which are currently fed from the backs. It only has one connection. So in essence, what this does is this project loops in Old Mill Creek and Nansman Crossing subdivisions. If something should happen to one of the other feeds, we'd still be able to feed that subdivision. Additional benefit, it provides a transfer of some water services that are currently connected to the City of Portsmouth Water Transmission Main, so those will be removed off of that lower pressure main, added on to our new main. And the easements that we're talking about tonight are needed for the construction of that new main. Graphically on the screen, what you see up at the top of the screen, a little bit hard to see, but Executive Court at the top by the Children's Center, highlighted in the bold red line is the extent of the easement. So running from where phase one ends at Executive Court all the way down to the bypass. The balance of the construction running down to River Creek is in existing right-of-way. After the public hearing, I'll be around for any questions that might pertain to this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Retell. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilman Bennett?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett. Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of revenue bonds by the City of Suffolk, Virginia, and establishing the terms, details, and provisions for the payment thereof. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your August 8th work session, Davenport and Company, the city's financial advisors brief City Council on the city's AAA bond ratings recently issued to the city from Moody's, Fitch, and Standard and Poor's. These ratings were necessary in preparation of the issuance of the city's GO bonds and stormwater revenue bonds. Tonight's public hearing is for the authorization of the issuance of the revenue bonds for the stormwater fund. Mr. Kyle Lox with Davenport and Company will provide a brief overview prior to your public hearing. Kyle?
Yes, sir. Mr. Manager and Mayor, members of council, nice to see you again on a lovely evening. Before we even get into the stormwater, just a real quick briefing and update for you, and some of you may have heard this, but as a follow-up to even our last meeting, when we were anticipating selling the general obligation bonds in the credit markets, just give you a little update, very good news, that happened this morning. And so those bonds were sold via competitive process, and the city received 14 bids in that competitive process. And so that is an incredible number of bids, very, very solid. And the winning interest rate was a 3.53%. And so where we typically plan is 5% in terms of, for your budgeting and capital planning, the idea being we want to make sure we're conservative. But just wanted to deliver that good news and kudos to you, Mayor, members of council, that literally 10:30 this morning, those bonds sold competitively. TD Securities was the winning bidder. And again, that interest rate for a 20-year loan was a 3.53%. So very, very good results, very, very good news. Technically, not the stormwater topic, we'll get to that in a second. But given that happened just a couple hours ago, I wanted to make sure we reported that to you as it is literally hot off the presses. So I think as you think about that in the context of the AAA credit ratings, what allowed you to do that as a city is having those AAA credit ratings and allowing that competitive sale to garner all that interest from the bond markets, again, with 14 different individual firms submitting a bid. So just kind of tying a couple pieces together, congratulations, Mayor, members of council, on that successful result. And so with that as a segue, then we'll talk a little bit about stormwater. We've talked about this a couple different times. This is really the last action that you as a council, we would ask that you take in order to move this process forward. So it won't be long, but again, just wanted to give a very brief update. So again, this stormwater issuance process will be issued via revenue bonds, approximately $5 million, all per your adopted CIP. That process has been ongoing during the summertime. We're going to go through that Virginia Resources Authority or VRA pool program. And your action this evening via an ordinance will be the last thing that is required along with the public hearing associated with it. On page two here, just a reminder, always thinking about the multi-year planning for the general fund, for water and sewer, and for stormwater. This issuance is roughly $5 million for those 2025 adopted needs for the stormwater fund. The bottom of the page there, you can see the two different colors. Basically, you are doing some debt funding and some cash funding, so that mixture of debt and cash funding for stormwater. And via this current planning, we would expect the future issuances for stormwater to be a little bit smaller, but this particular is $5 million for purposes of the adopted CIP. Just as a little reminder, we've gone through a direct loan process. We think the VRA looks better. VRA sells in the public credit market, which is the same place as you sold today in those GO bonds. And so again, those rates, as we sit here today, are, you know, probably in the 350, maybe 375 range for a VRA sale, depending upon the exact day. Page number four, just purely interest rates, maybe our results today probably tell a better story even than what's on the graph, but it does remain a favorable environment. Even if rates were a tail away, there's a lot of news in the world right now. So even if they were to move up, which we don't have any control over, you don't have any control, we remain in a very favorable environment. And also a reminder that the dollars that are borrowed are able to be reinvested in that SNAP program. The Treasury is very well aware of that, that is actually earning about 5.4%. And so if we're borrowing in the threes, turning around, being able to reinvest that in the fives, since that's further benefiting the city. Just in terms of timing, top of the page here, again, this is the final action of City Council between the public hearing and an ordinance that would be adopted. TW Bruno with McGuire Woods is over my left shoulder to answer any questions on the legal side, is the firm, again, that puts all that together for you as a city. That will happen this evening. And then really from there, VRA will sell their bonds October 29th, by the time they work their way through the process. That's when the rate will be set via that program, and funds will be in hand basically by Thanksgiving on November 19th. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening. And again, congratulations on the successful sale today.
Thank you, Kyle. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What's your pleasure? Councilman Johnson?
Move for acceptance.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Fawcett? Councilman Fawcett, did you want a second?
Yeah, I just had a comment.
Or a comment?
I just had a comment. One second. I just want to thank you for giving us a briefing on the GO bonds going out at that 3% rate. That's phenomenal. So thank you for the good work you've done over there at Davenport to help us, and we'll see where the stormwater one goes next. But great work, that's good news. People don't understand the savings, all the benefits of both end of it, when we get a rate like that. That is pretty significant. I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Okay, we've got a second from Councilman Fawcett. And before we vote, I mean, just, it's been mentioned, but people always seem, a lot of folks wonder about the AAA bond rating and how important it is, especially in our stormwater funds and our other enterprise funds. They have to be self-sustaining, and lots of times, debt service is a considerable part of what's being funded, especially when it comes to your water. I mean, it's, I believe, about 30% probably of the debt, 30% of the budget is based on debt service. So these interest rates allow us to keep the rates as low as they can possibly be by reducing the debt service cost. So with that in mind, it is good news. I mean, the AAA bond ratings all the way across were really good news, and this is just the benefit of having those rather favorable ratings. So with that being said, we've got a motion on the floor for approval from Councilman Johnson, which was seconded by Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no warnings this evening nor resolutions. We do have one staff report, which will be addressing roadway maintenance and our paving program. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, the vice, uh, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, the Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, will provide the staff report. Just promoted you, Robert.
I appreciate that, sir. If the pay was commensurate, everything would be great. Good evening to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I hope this is a good news story. As you know, occasionally, we like to come back and just tell you a little bit about what Public Works is doing, and just inform our citizenry of where some of the expenditures are going on in our city and what we're doing. And we're going to talk about road maintenance, and specifically, I'm going to get into the paving program tonight as we go forward. So what is our road maintenance program? Well, certainly, we maintain the roadside drainage systems in our city. We maintain the roadside vegetation, the grass and the medians on the shoulders. Traffic engineering is a part of this, and it maintains all the signs, all the signals, and all the pavement markings throughout our city. We do some other roadside maintenance. We collect litter. We repair shoulders, and we repair sidewalks. And we also do pavement, where's where we're going to kind of finish up tonight. But first off, in an overview of our drainage program, this past year, our staff cleaned over 34 miles of ditches. We swept 610 miles of curb and gutter. We only did 195 linear feet of curb and gutter repair, which was good. That meant we didn't have a lot of concrete that was damaged, and we could spend those funds other places. We did, however, repair 138 drop inlets. And a lot of those were where pipes were separated from the inlets, and we were getting leaking, and dirt was going away, and we had to go in and fix those. We did inspect and repair over 30, almost 3,400 linear feet of piping, however, throughout the city. And one of the more interesting facts is we removed 26 beaver dams throughout our city. And you think, why are we worried about the beavers? Well, so often, the beavers like to go up, and they like to clog the pipes that go underneath our roadway carrying drainage. And they do it on the upstream side, and suddenly you go from something that was passing through the pipes, the water rises, rises, big storms comes, and it floods our road. It has the potential to actually wash our roads out. We do do most of that. Well, we start out by doing some of that internally with staff trying to deter the beavers, remove those dams and deter them. Oftentimes, we're not successful at that, and we do have a company out of Wakefield that comes in and assists us with that to more permanently remove those animals and get our drainage way back flowing. Unfortunately, one of the things that's a consequence of modern life is too often animals end up in the highway. Most of these are wild animals, end up getting hit and left, and we do try to get all those picked up in a very timely manner. And then we dispose of those. Most folks are, what do you do with them? We've actually got some industrial incinerators that are licensed by Department Environmental Quality that we put them in and dispose of them in a very safe and clean environmental way. We're actually in the second year of our ditch maintenance program. You remember in the last year, I did a briefing for you on our whole program of where we divided the city up into zones, and we were going to go over a 10-year period, we were going to start cleaning our city ditches. Well, we've completed year one, which was Zones 1 and 12, which was around Restless Beach area and also kind of southeast of downtown. Those were completed. Very interesting program. The vast majority of those areas, people were very happy we came. Every once in a while, we get into a community or in front of a home, and they say, well, I don't want my ditch cleaned because I like to be able to mow grass. Again, we had to maintain drainage, so we do what we had to do. But again, been very successful. We started already into the second year. That's going to be Zones 11 and 19. I'll show you that on a graphic in just a moment. Zone 11 is kind of east, east side of downtown is slightly north, and then Zone 19 is at Hollandway in one of our rural areas, and again, picking up a lot of area. I know these graphics are just a little bit small, but again, you can see the, kind of the pink area around downtown is Zone 11, and I guess it's, I'd call it purple. I'm sure that one of the ladies would correct me on my color choice at Zone 19. 19 is the Car Lane Indian Trail 19 is the Car Lane, Indian Trail, Kingsdale, Glen Haven, Ruertown area, and again, Zone 11 downtown picks up Riverview, Boston, Lakeside, Saratoga, Hall Place, South Suffolk, Pleasant Hill, Old Town, and Kingsborough Heights. So one of the big differences there, when we're talking about Zone 19, that's a very rural area, mostly open conveyances to clean. When we come into Zone 11 in downtown, again, a lot of that is more urbanized, and it's closed conveyance systems. Certainly, closed conveyance are a lot more work because we've got to get into pipes, we've got to clean inlets out, we've got to flush pipes out, occasionally outfall ditches, whereas in the rural areas, it's a little easier just to kind of plywood ditch open and haul the debris away. So again, a little challenge, but again, that program is well underway, and thus far, has been fairly well received. We also maintain the roadside vegetation. There are actually 1,143 miles of highways that we mow in our cycles. Of those, we try to cut our primaries every two or three weeks. Part of that is depending on exactly which primary, where it's located in the city. And our secondary roads are on about a six-week cycle. Sometimes it gets to eight, sometimes it gets a little deep than we want, depending on the summertime. If we have a dry summer, works pretty well. If we have a wet summer, it's a little more challenging sometimes because grass grows higher and faster. And also, one of the things we try to do is anytime we're getting ready to have a mowing cycle, especially on our arterial highways, is the crews go through, and we try to pick the trash up prior to mowing, so the movers don't just distribute it further. One of the interesting things I would note for you, I've actually watched our crews come down 58 bypass, and they mow, and they will be a mile up the highway, and you look behind them, and it's already litter on the highway again. So again, we certainly ask our citizens to help us with that. A lot of this is blowing out of vehicles, a lot of it's blowing out of the beds of pickups and service trucks. Again, people don't think when they throw it in the back. But again, the wind gets it, blows it out, and it just gets all everywhere. So again, that is one of the services that we do. Traffic engineering, you may not know this, this is one of those trivia facts for you. There are over 10,000 signs in the city of Suffolk. I think there's a song about that, signs, signs, everywhere signs, but we have a lot of them. Over years' time, we have had to fabricate and repair about 2,800 of those signs. That could be anything from a stop sign to a street name, to a do not litter, to, you know, just whatever you can think of. Our shop is very well equipped. We can make anything that's a standard highway sign, and we can actually make quite a few other things that we do for the city at various times, and very responsibly as far as cost. We have 107 traffic signals located throughout our city, and we have a crew of six men that maintain that 24 hours a day, 365. And they also maintain a lot of associated equipment with that. So in today's world, there's a lot of communications equipment, fiber optic communications, flashing equipment, detection equipment, flood zone sensors, railroad sensors, there's a lot of things out there that come into this traffic system. And again, they're responsible for keeping all of that operating, along with the fact they have a bucket truck. So every once in a while, they get called out to kind of help us cut some limbs and do some other things throughout the city. Our pavement marking crews, we actually have 132 and a half miles of latex. That's just kind of paint, the line paint that you see on the road, and we had 38.6 miles of thermo. Well, what's the difference? Generally, we have brand-new asphalt. We put thermoplastic down. That's a, it's a big machine, it's got big heaters on it, and it's actually extruding a plastic line out that adheres to the pavement. It adheres really well, lasts a pretty long time, most time on initial highway, initial insulation. You get five to seven years out of that before we have to go back and maintain it again. Once it starts wearing, however, we go back and we paint over top of that, because the problem is, what happens to a lot of times is in the thermo, the beads wear off and you get, lose the reflectivity. And if you go back and put another layer of thermo, it starts building up, and all of a sudden, you've got this big, thick line out on the highway. The paint goes back, freshens it back up, gets the reflectivity back in. And again, also, it depends on the roadway. Certainly, on our secondary roads, most of the time, we're putting paint in, because paint on a secondary road that has much less volumes of traffic lasts much longer than, say, on one of our highways that have much higher volumes of traffic. This past year, we also put in 590 arrows, letters, and crosswalks, and you say, what's a letter? Well, it might be an RR for railroad, it might be a school, any number of things. It might be speed limit ahead or speed reduction ahead. So there's all those message signs coming in that we put on the pavement. We put in 5,900 linear feet of stopbar. You know, generally, a stopbar is probably about 12-foot long in a lane, so you can kind of do the math, there's a whole lot of stopbars, and that's maintenance. And also throughout our city, there's a number of other facilities, flexible delineators and different things that we put up to try to help manage traffic and keep people where we want them to be and keep them safe. Pavement management. So in our city, these are the, this is the latest information from VDOT that we're getting paid for. There are 785.46 miles of roadway in our city. Of those, 370 lane miles of arterials. Now, what's the difference between a road mile and a lane mile? A road mile is literally from point A to point B, right? 58 goes from Chesapeake to Southampton County. But 58 has between 4, 6, 5, depending on what location you're in, lanes out there. Each lane counts as a mile. So a mile of highway is a mile of highway, but that mile of highway may have 2, 3, 4, 5, even 6-mile lane miles of highway. Why is that important? Because again, each lane mile has some maintenance that has to be done on it and taken care of. 1,311 lane miles of arterials and collectives. Anybody knows about our city? 420 square miles, there's a lot of roads running. And again, all those need to be maintained. So how do we schedule our maintenance on our roadway? How do we determine where we pave? Well, about every five years, there's a company that comes in, and they go through, and you may have seen this, this is a really cool, high-tech truck. It's actually a van, it rides along, it's got all kinds of sensors, there's things looking down, there's things looking left, there's things looking right, there's things that's measuring the level of the road, the cross-section, it's taking video, it's determining is it pavement distress or not, and it's gathering all this data, and it goes into a big database, and they come back, and they put it all into this computer algorithm, and they come back and they generate some numbers. Well, actually, today's world, we use two numbers. We use what's called a PCI and a CCI. PCI is pavement condition index. That's what historically Suffolk has used, at least for my entire career, for pavement management. Again, it generates a number. VDOT, BNVDOT, likes two things, just slightly different, and they have their own system they call CCI. Condition quality index is exactly what their number is. Just figures slightly different, not much. And every year, for VDOT, we have to give them their numbers in CCI. We still like PCI because we think it's a little better accurate thing, but we get those sheets out every year, and it lists all these road segments of what we do. So the question becomes, well, how much money do you spend every year paving our roads? Well, this past year, we spent about 13 and a half million dollars out of our road maintenance fund to maintain and repave and repair existing roadways. We were also very fortunate, we got a little over $2 million from the state of Virginia through the State of Good Repair Program. You know, every once in a while, you see, we do a lot with the bridges, but every so often, you see those paving programs come in, that's state of good repair money. That's kind of bonus money that helps us maintain, and is really geared towards arterial highways, which is really great, but we get to throw that in there. We also annually, we also annually repair and patch about 700 potholes. One of the good things is, is we improve the pavement condition in our city, the number of potholes should go down, and we have less of that, and we can do more the other. You may also ask, what exactly does $13 million mean? So this past year, or this coming year, our road maintenance budget, traffic engineering, is about $36.7 million. Of that, $32 million of that comes straight from VDOT. That's the money they give us for road maintenance. So that means we actually also get about $4.4 million, some fees and services we sell and some other things. So again, the vast majority of this money is the VDOT money they give us to maintain the roadways. So you work the math on that, 41.8% of all the money VDOT's giving us is going straight into pavement maintenance now. So again, you ask, well, what's the condition of our roads? So this is a report that gets generated out of that. This is actually the CCI index. And again, they rate our roads in several categories. There's very poor, which we don't like, and there's excellent, which is very, very good, and of course, a scenario in-between. Generally, we're trying to make sure we get rid of all the roads that are in the poor category and below. What we like to do, see if I can catch back up again, what we like to do is catch roads before they get so far deteriorated that a simple paving cannot repair it. Some roads get to a point that the only way you fix it is you got to completely rebuild the road. And I'm going to share with you some information on that in just a moment. Again, our overall average in our city is about 76, which is actually pretty good. So we've got roads, I think our lowest-rated road is about a four. We've got roads all the way up at 100, which is a brand-new paved road. And again, we see this every year, what it does and what happens. So these next three slides are kind of small. I just want to kind of give you an excerpt of what we're looking at here. This is straight out of that database. This is slide one, this is the start, and you can see, we actually have a CCI road up there that's a four. You may ask, well, why do we have roads that are four? Sometimes that depends, that may be roads that don't really serve anything, don't go anywhere, doesn't have very much traffic, if any traffic on it, and you get to balance. Okay, where do we spend our money? Do we spend it on a road that doesn't have any traffic, or do we spend it somewhere we have more traffic? As you can see, we don't get too far down in there. We're a little less than 1,000 segments in here, and we're back to where we jumped from those low categories back into the good and above, which is very important. And again, you see here at the end, we've got a whole lot of roads at 100. What I did want to point to you out of this, if you take notice in that far-left-hand column, there are 4,450 road segments in our city that are measured, monitored, and we're responsible for maintaining. So again, there's a big, big deal of how do you manage that road, and how do you figure out where you put your paving money at? You may ask, excuse me, you may ask, with 13 and a half million dollars, have we been making any headway? I mean, one of the things I hear a lot is, our road's in terrible shape. Well, what I'd have to tell you, just kind of look at this map, this is the last three years of paving, and I had staff put it together on the map for you. To me, that's pretty impressive, when you look at the number of roads and the amount of roads that we have paved in the last three years. And you'll also notice, it's not any one area, the city is consistently across our city, it's every council borough, it's every neighborhood. Again, some people will holler, well, my road hadn't been paved in 30 years. Well, okay, does your road need to be paved? We don't just pave for the sake of paving, we pave because of the need. But again, we've been very consistent in trying to especially work on our collective roadways and arterial roadways to bring them up to standards, and again, raise up the roads that the majority of the traffic is on to get them away around our city. Have we got it all accomplished? Absolutely not. There's always going to be roads to be done. So you may ask, well, where are we going to spend money this year? So the next two slides here is actually our proposed list of paving for this fall. If you go down through that list and look, you'll probably realize that several streets on here, we've already gotten paved this far since July the 1st. And again, we're going to continue doing this moving forward, and then somewhere over the January, February timeframe, we'll create a second list similar to this for what we'll do in the spring. So generally, as many segments as you see here, we're generally doing about twice that many in a year's time. Some of these are very small segments of roads, some of these are very, bigger, long sections of road. But again, we're trying to bring the quality of our roadways up throughout our city. And with that, I will note for you, in the probably the next 30 days, we'll be back in front of you, and we're going to talk a little bit more about our stormwater program. So generally, what we're hearing is either roads or ditches, and we're trying to take care of both of those and hit that balance and act. And again, we'll come back with some more information, but I am certainly available for any questions you may have this evening concerning either road maintenance or paving in general.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Councilman Fawcett?
I got a couple for you there, Mr. Lewis. Thank you for the information tonight. About drainage, if you go into the Village of Driver right now, and look at the drainage behind the knothole, down Driver Lane in front of Breria Church, over to the other side of Driver Lane, and look at that fallout right there, that I did make a complaint the other day, they went in and cut it down, but they didn't clean it out. So therefore, cutting it down and leaving all the debris in the ditch is not going to give us a drainage, because that is a main drainage that comes through there. That has not been cleaned out, I know, in the last four or five years. The drainage in that area right now is half the size of you out there today. And if we don't clean it up before this fall weather starts coming in, this rain comes, I'm going to have flooded businesses right there on the corner of King's Highway and Driver Lane, and that's unacceptable. So I'd like to know, all this is pretty about all these places you're doing, but I don't see anything in the village right behind those businesses to help fallout, clean those fallouts, so we get good drainage in there.
Yes, sir. Actually, thank you for asking about that. Certainly, a two-part answer to that. That drainage way had grown up quite a bit, and the first thing we had to do was get in there and mow the vegetation down, so we can come back in there with some equipment and try to clean some of those ditches out. But even more importantly, council several years ago elected to put in the CIP, a proposal, and one of the projects we're working on from drainage is to actually take that open ditch, that open conveyance, and actually lay drain pipe through there, do a closed system that we can guarantee will flow and not have the issue with vegetation. And that is under design at this time. I don't recall right off the top of my head exactly what the schedule is to get the completed project. I know there's some issues with some easements we've got to deal with in there, and we're working with our property owners to, do we follow the existing ditch? Does he or she want us to move the ditch slightly again to better enhance that property for future use? But we are working on that.
Yeah, and I did look at where you had cut down. That lady had gone in there, put nice rock in there. I mean, it's well, it's well taken care of from her standpoint, but the growth went over it to the point where it's, you can't even tell sometimes where the rocks at. But behind the knothole is another main fallout that takes that water from the center of Driver, down through by the Breria Church, cuts under that roadway and falls it out. If we don't get a handle on that, then we've got, we're going to have a flood problem there. On the first good rain, we're going to have, and it's not going to be too far from now.
Yes, sir. And again, as I would note for you...
I want to do something before, I can understand the piping issue. I have a problem with that. I don't care if that's in the CIP, but what I'd like to do is at least get that mitigated now, while we're even thinking about how we're going to fix it with the pipe issue.
We are working on that, sir. And part, the other issue, and I kind of mentioned that as far as easements, not all of these ditches do we have the authority to maintain, and that's part of what this project is, to get that authority. We probably took a little bit of leniency in there and just went in and did some mowing to keep it open, but again, we are working on that.
Well, I personally know the people that own the knothole, and I don't think for a minute that they would disagree with somebody going in and cleaning that ditch line out. I mean, otherwise, I probably wouldn't be bringing it up right now, today. But it's got to have some clean out around that driver village that are going underwater.
Yes, sir.
And the second thing is, is on the paving. Yeah, a lot of great paving going on, but I ride from Nansford Parkway and Shoulders Hill Road, across the railroad tracks, down Nansford Parkway to come downtown. As soon as you cross those railroad tracks, coming toward downtown, between that and the elementary school, their road, the road has raised up, and you go over, and it's bump, 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 and it's all the way down. If we're doing such a good job on that, why, I've asked before, I've asked up here at the City Hall, to have that looked at, to take them bumps out of that daggon road. Maybe the road doesn't need to be totally repaired, but to take the bumps out of it would be a great accomplishment. And I didn't see anything going on with that, so maybe that's something that needs to be looked at as well.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, Robert. Question, I think we had talked about some time back, about a drainage plan, and you always coming up with a plan where you would have designated time for certain areas, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And how is that coming along, so people will know when to expect drainage cleaning in that area? Do you have any idea?
Yes, sir. So as I briefed you all within the last year, and as on the screen right now, the city is divided up into, I believe, it's 20 zones, and we're trying to do two zones every year over 10-year periods, so we are coming. But with that, while we concentrate in those zones, if there are specific locations that we have significant flooding that's creating public safety issues, we do also try to attend to those on a case-by-case basis. But again, we've got to, we've got to work our... But again, we've got to, we've got to work our plan to get through and get everything caught back up.
Okay. So in the driver, back still in the driver area, we have talked about this some before, because there was some flooding just below Bennett Pass Road. Couple of houses got flooded there a few years back. So I think we need to sort of put that kind of in the upper echelon of your drainage program and take a look at that, because those houses, I know it was two houses right there that got flooded when we had that bad storm a couple of years ago. So that drainage in that area.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you taking a look at that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Robert, for everything that the Public Works Department goes, does. Having gone to the Public Works Academy this summer, y'all are definitely a busy, busy group of people. And I imagine your job is a little bit like being an owner of an old home. There's never a shortage of projects that you have to undertake to try to keep things even just at a stable, much less get ahead. My question to you is, in some of the older neighborhoods downtown, the old curbing, the streets have been paved, I guess, one or two times over, so there is no basic curb height left anymore in a lot of places. And particularly in some of the places where there was the old wooden curb, curbing, Lakeside, Williamson, you know, some of those neighborhoods come to mind. Is there any schedule for going back and taking a look at some of those neighborhoods and seeing if maybe, A, the wooden curbing could be replaced with modern concrete curbing? And then also, even in some of the places where there is concrete curbing, the street level has gotten almost as high as the curbs themselves so that, you know, the rainwater that's supposed to run down the curb is actually just sort of backing up into that transition area between the street and the sidewalk and whatnot?
Yes, sir. So as I kind of started at the beginning, this is a maintenance program. This is not a construction program. With that said, over the years, it is certainly cheaper to pave than it is to mill and pave. And decisions have been made in the past that we're dealing with. So as we go into these existing neighborhoods, these older neighborhoods, oftentimes it have had a couple of cycles of paving and not any other work. We have to, one of the things that sometimes costs us money is we have to go in and we have to bring a milling machine in, and we have to cut some of those old layers of asphalt down to put a new layer back, which again lowers that street level down. If there's curbing that is damaged that exists, whether it's wood or concrete, we can maintain that with our maintenance fund, but we cannot upgrade. So if your neighborhood has got wooden curbs, I can't use maintenance money to put concrete curbs in. If your neighborhood has got a concrete curb and it gets damaged or broken, we can come back in there and repair that. Yes, sir.
Council, any other questions or comments?
Like to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Councilman Rector, where they do coordinate a lot of times on some capital projects, I know recently Utilities and Public Works coordinated over there on Kilby Avenue where there between Hall Place and over to Saratoga, the water man was placed and went in there as part of that project. They took the opportunity through that project to replace the wooden curbs there and put in concrete curbs. And that happens when they can tag. So I don't want to leave the thought that they're not addressing any of it. They tried to coordinate it in the new construction projects.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just a couple of comments. Once again, it always, every time, it seems like I get a presentation from Public Works, it continues to amaze me how expansive your responsibilities are, exactly what you do and what you don't do. And it's really a daunting task when you look at the size of the city to be able to keep up with it. The ditch maintenance plans is something that we implemented two years ago, I think it was. And the whole thought process is that we would be proactive rather than reactive, which is what was happening prior to that. We would wait for there to be a ditch problem, report it, and then you would go remediate it. But with our ditch maintenance plan, we're being proactive in doing the maintenance on a regular basis, you know, a set schedule for maintenance. But we still, you know, respond to those particular ones, so I'm glad to hear that that's working out okay. I would like to say one thing as far as mowing operations and litter collection this year. For where, I think you've done an exceptional job. I know that we contract a lot of that out, but several years ago, we were having issues with it. It seems, I mean, from my perspective, and I try to be cognizant of what's, what's happening going up and down the roads, it appears to me that whatever you're doing is really, it's working. Very seldom do I see litter on the road. I mean, there's always somebody dumping something, but it seems like almost every day, I see somebody actively picking up the litter or has a weed eater, and our roads are looking, you know, really good coming in and going out. The sign shop, you know, I've got to know a couple of people that worked in the sign shop, and you guys do spit out some signs. And a perfect example was, you know, we talked about having an issue with through trucks on Matoka Road. I mean, it wasn't forty-eight hours before you had one sign done, in seventy-two hours they had another one on a pole. And it's working. So I appreciate your response to this there. And the only question, other question I have, and I should probably know the answer to this question already, I do know that your maintenance funds cannot be, cannot be utilized for anything new. It strictly has to be maintenance. I guess my question is, when it goes into this roadway maintenance fund, this is just a stable fund that stays here. We don't necessarily have to spend it down every year. Does it carry over to the next year? We can add more funds to it? And of course, that funding's coming in from the lane miles, so exactly, you know, may have to ask Charles, but from a finance standpoint, is that how it works?
No, sir. So actually, VDOC gives us that money, and we have to spend the vast majority. We can carry a little bit over, and we do carry a little bit over. Being enterprise fund as such, at the end of the year, anything we've not expended rolls in what we call our fund balance, and we get our allocation the next year. And on occasion, and we've done this several times in the recent years, we'll go back to fund balance and we'll put a little bit of that money forward. In the last three years, what I've done is when I pull money forward, I put it right back into the paving program. So again, our money comes in, it has to be spent on road maintenance. We can't spend it anywhere else. We got to account for it. And yes, we try to be very cognizant, and we try to be very efficient and use everything we can to give the most bang for the buck.
Okay, but we've never had to give any money back, right?
We will not give any money back.
Okay, that's all, that's all, that's the bottom line. All righty, thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
All right, our next action is a motion to schedule a public hearing for September eighteenth, 2024, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation, for the Spates Spillway Bridge Replacement Project. And a motion would be ordered. Councilman Fawcett? Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilman Bennett. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a joint work session of City Council and the Suffolk Public School Board for Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, 2024, at three P.M., unless canceled. And a motion would be in order. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Moved to approve.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilman Williams?
Seconded, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our final motion is a motion to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, September eighteenth, 2024, at four P.M., unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. And a motion would be ordered. Councilman Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Williams?
Seconded, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, we please, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, will you please explain the guidelines?
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Jeff Hancock, thirty-eight, eighty-nine Wayleyville Boulevard, representing the Suffolk Master Gardeners Association regarding his organization's purpose and storage issues.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. I am Jeff Hancock, the current Vice President of the Suffolk Master Gardeners Association. On behalf of the Association, I want to thank you for allowing us to address the City Council this evening. The purpose of our address this evening is twofold. First, to highlight our purpose as an organization and the services we provide to city. Second, to seek your assistance with an issue we have regarding storage and meeting space for our equipment and our meetings. The Suffolk Master Gardeners Association consists of volunteers who are Virginia Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners. Virginia Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners are educators who volunteer within their communities to encourage and promote environmentally sound horticulture practices through sustainable landscape management education. Extension Master Gardeners work with local agencies such as schools and park departments to teach residents a variety of home horticulture topics, including combating food insecurity with home and school gardens, supporting Suffolk's pollinator and wildlife populations with the integration of native plants in the landscape, providing Suffolk's youth with hands-on environmental education to inspire lifelong awareness and promote volunteerism, introducing sustainable landscape practices like soil testing, responsible nutrient management, appropriate plant choices, and integrated pest management. The Suffolk Master Gardeners Association is a 501(c)(3) organization formed to support its Extension Master Gardener volunteers. The Suffolk Master Gardeners Association mission is to continue to educate ourselves in all aspects of gardening and to convey our knowledge to others in conjunction with the Virginia Cooperative Extension Program. The Suffolk Master Gardeners Association intent is become the most effective Master Gardeners Association in the Hampton Roads, Virginia region. Since nineteen ninety-four, our volunteers have provided services to the city of Suffolk. In the calendar year 2023, our last full reporting period, our volunteers drove twenty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty miles, contributed seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-seven hours to make thirty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five in-person, online, email, or phone educational contacts. This is the equivalent to more than three full-time equivalent employees for the city, a value of two-hundred-forty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight dollars. Whether it's through our Ready Set Grow Project that introduces first graders throughout the city to horticulture terms and how plants grow, to our Horticulture Therapy Program that is designed to improve the quality of life of our citizens in senior living facilities, our volunteers almost literally provide cradle-to-grave services to this city. You can find our volunteers working at one of the fourteen public gardens, in the farmer's markets, the four-kids facilities, and various city events. As the urban and suburban population of this city increases, so too will the need for our services. As we accommodate those increasing needs, we will also need to increase our outreach materials. Our extension office is currently housed on the third floor of the old Human Services Building across the street. Unfortunately, we are not currently able to store these needed materials within our office spaces. Our issue is that several of the spaces have been occupied for storage of the train station museum, leaving us without additional storage. And the second problem is the elevator has been inoperable for going on to one year, making our spaces, to include our meeting spaces, inaccessible for many of our volunteers. With our participation in many upcoming city events and with other city groups, we are in dire need of adequate and accessible space. Our V.C. agent, Andrea Sly, is currently working with members of the city to meet our long-term goals for adequate and accessible storage and meeting spaces. But our needs are immediate, and we wanted to take this time to let you know as a City Council that we need your help in order for us to help our citizens. As an association, we look forward to strengthening our relationship with the City Council to educate and improve the life of our citizens. I have provided a fact sheet with a contact card for you for follow-up questions. Do I have any questions at this time?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Blue, one sixty-eight Preserve Way, representing the Preserve at Lake Mead, regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city manager. My name is Daniel Blue. I reside at one sixty-eight Preserve Way, Suffolk, Virginia. As many of you might remember, this is my fifth time here. I'm here to highlight the failure of Worth Development and Pitch Kettle LLC to comply with approved engineering plans for the development, the Preserve at Lake Mead, located off Pitch Kettle Road. I closed on my home in April of twenty twenty-two. Behind my home is four-point-two acres of, was four-point-two acres of overgrown weeds, approximately thirty inches high. A year later, they were still there, only they were five feet high. So I decided to contact the property management. No resolution. So I thought the city might be interested in these violations. I called the city, I called the mayor's office, my city councilman, the planning department, property inspections. After twelve weeks, in July, the developer was cited for the violations. And on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the weeds were cut down for the first time. I've been living there fifteen months. Weeds were six feet high. I'm six-two, they were taller than me. I'm back in the same cycle. You made, that was, that was last year. The last time we were here, my wife and I, you made a suggestion, a couple suggestions to us, and we've taken your advice. I'm prepared to give you an update now on what's been going on. We, someone suggested that we read our HOA, so we have both read it cover to cover. One of you asked if there was a transition plan in the document. There's no such plan. On August the seventh, twenty twenty-four, my wife sent an email to the Project Management Association requesting two things: financial statement for the HOA, so we could follow where our money was going, and a transition plan. We received none, neither. We did receive one yesterday from a Mr. Chip Worth, an intimidating email, saying, as, well, I'm sorry, let me back up. We received an email yesterday from Mr. Worth after five o'clock, and it was asking if we could meet before the City Council meeting. Well, we have no problem meeting with Mr. Worth, but that does not preclude us presenting our case to you, because we feel like you have staked in this also. We tried to reply to his email, and it was returned, undeliverable, blocked. So I don't know whether he had intention of actually doing this, or he was just checking, checking the blocks. A second email we received from him stated that a special assessment would be needed, would be levied to the homeowners. to the homeowners for replanning of trees that we allegedly cut down. It was some weeds, and actually, the city had a contractor cut them down after we've come up here a couple times, asking you to get the developer to cut the weeds down. So I don't know what's going to happen there, but they're coming, and I'm not going anywhere. I want to be clear that I'm not just expressing my concerns. Included in your booklets are the signatures of 84 voting-age residents of the Preserve at Lake Mead, 57 households, which translates to roughly $31.5 million within our development who share our concerns. Would residents of Lake Mead please just stand and be recognized, please? I'd like to thank you for coming out. The Ramos family and my wife knocked on. You can be seated. Thank you very much. The Ramos family and my wife and I went door to door and collected 84 signatures. And we've heard some Sahara stories about this developer. Someone here also suggested that this might be a civil matter for us to pursue. So we saw an attorney, our closing attorney. He suggested that this was such a complicated matter that we needed a firm big enough to handle five or six things, that a retainer would be at minimum $20,000 for a firm like this. Well, Mr. Worth already took $12,000 from me if he continues down the road that he's in, so I'm in for a penny, in for a pound. I want to tell you that I came to this city to live here, to stay. Mr. Worth and that development company, they came here to make a profit and leave. I want to go downtown. Last week, my wife and one of the couples from the neighborhood, we went downtown, spent a couple hundred bucks, having a couple beers and some hors d'oeuvres. I want to do that. I don't think the developer is interested in that. Okay? So I think that I am the resident you want in your community. I think that I am what you were trying to attract. Now, what are you going to do to keep me here? Cities do dissolve themselves. I don't know what kind of special relationship or... I'm just puzzled why this guy, why this developer hasn't taken care of these problems. When I initially came here, I just wanted you to cut down the weeds. I wanted you to get him to cut down the weeds. Well, he wouldn't cut down the weeds. So what do I do? I go and get a drawing and start looking at it. And it looks like he's responsible for not only cutting down the weeds, he's responsible for a whole lot of things he hasn't done. And nobody's doing anything. I want to know when you're going to do something. I want to know a schedule. My wife and Mr. Ramos have some details of more specific issues that have occurred. We have a street in our neighborhood that residents have been living on for one year that doesn't have streetlights. A brand-new neighborhood, no streetlights. So they can't let their kids out at the dark. It's not safe. We've had vandalism because there's no streetlights. To say that you're asleep at will is an understatement. I do respect you have a lot to do, and I appreciate all of your efforts to build this city and to attract us. But you got to do something to keep us. I appreciate any suggestions, any questions. Like I said, Mr. Ramos and my wife have some details. My wife and Mr. Ramos have spent a lot of time preparing a PowerPoint. I hope you will take the time to read it and appreciate that these concerns are real. And I see all this development going on here in Suffolk, but I'm thinking... I'll say it like this. I saw the daughter-in-law one time, and he said, "One slice of chocolate cake is good. More than that, it's not so good." So in the terms of our development, maybe we need to just slow down, just take one thing at a time. If we don't have the support and resources to regulate these people who won't regulate themselves, then I don't know what we're getting into. I could leave. I can probably afford to leave Suffolk, but I don't know that everyone can, and I don't know if you want the people who cannot afford to stay. I don't know if that's what you want to be left with. Thank you very much for your time. We're running out of options. I'd like you to help me before we have to escalate it anymore. Thank you very much.
For Leah Rose, 168 Preserve Way, representing the Preserve at Lake Mead, regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening. Just one point of clarification. I'm representing myself. We don't have anything formal. There is a homeowners association, but as many of you are probably familiar, the declarant, the developer, maintains control of the homeowners association, and our specific document says until all lots are sold. So I'm representing myself. But we do have community members here. As you likely know from your own rules, we were unable to use your AV equipment to present, so we took it upon ourselves to print in color binders for each of you. I will reference the page numbers as I go along. So I just want to give you a little overview. I'm on page three. This is the site information on who owns this land, the developer. And most importantly on this page is the agreement, which says the city has the right to use the engineering plans that the developer paid for in the event that the developer fails in his responsibility to build out the community. I want to bring to your attention a couple of ordinances, and these ordinances are significant because it's how we got here. It's how our development developed as it is. One is the ordinance on parks and open space. This is page four. This ordinance says, hey, as we have residents, there's a need for space, parks. However, that takes money, and we don't necessarily have the money or space to develop parks. So, hey, we'll give you an incentive. If you, developer, come in, applicant, and create open space, we'll give you what's called a bonus. Go to the next slide. Incentive zoning. A density bonus refers to additional dwelling units or floor area permitted on a property pursuant to a conditional use permit. There are very specific rules and guidelines. There's a maximum of 30%, but in general, an acre of active open space translates to an additional unit on a property. Moving on to slide six. The original zoning for our community requires one acre per unit. So based on the size of our development, there should be 128 units. However, through the process of this incentive zoning and submitting a conditional use and getting approval for an additional use permit, a developer is allowed to increase the number of lots on the land, a bonus density. The initial ordinance that you passed in 2007, allowing for this development, allowed for a 35-lot bonus density. That was expanded and amended in 2019 to reflect 39 lots. So our development is slated to be 167 homes as opposed to 128 homes. Among these documents here and the terms of the conditional use permit, our minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. 10,000 square feet amounts to roughly .23 acres. That's significant because that means, in essence, you get four lots on what would have been one lot, had the developer not had a conditional use permit. So slide seven shows the calculations. Forty-two additional acres in our community over what is required. The vast majority of that is active open space, where you get one additional unit per one acre of active open space, as opposed to a half bonus unit for passive open space. The significance of this, the reason I'm spending so much time on this, is because at some point, someone said, you know, I think the developer just didn't realize that they needed to build out the active open spaces. The very premise of our development has active open space built into it. Otherwise, our development would be 128 units. So it's impossible to forget that you have access to basically $21 million in additional homes because of the promise of active open space. If you look at slides nine and 10, of the homes currently built, Chesapeake Homes is the largest builder. That's who built our home and many of the homes of our neighbors here this evening. This is the depiction on their website, but it's pretty consistent across builders, that these are the kinds of amenities that we would be receiving in our community. We understand they're subject to change, but in essence, this is what we paid for. This is what we expected to see, but it's not at all what we've gotten. Instead, what we've received appears on slide 10, and I'm just giving you an overview of some of the deficiencies that exist within our community. Just so you know, slide 11 is a letter from the City of Suffolk Department of Planning and Community Development citing some of those issues, but not all of them. My husband already referenced that we have no streetlights on a street that has been occupied for more than a year. We have incomplete drainage piping. The walking trail in four of the six phases is not ADA compliant, and it's not built to specifications. The four acres behind our home, based on the engineering plans, and we requested the engineering plans for all six phases, it's supposed to be turf grass, not there. Additionally, there's construction debris throughout, and we are missing numerous advertised amenities. I've exceeded my time. Thank you very much. I think Mr. Ramos is coming up after me, and he's going to continue in the same document. Thank you.
Peter Ramos, 125 Abbey Road, representing the Preserve at Lake Mead, regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Council members. And as I continue on with this brief, slide 13, as indicated, so eight lampposts are supposed to be installed last time we came here. There was some progress. They were marking the ground, but I don't know what happened. Light poles aren't there. So I've been at that residence, 125 Abbey Road, for a lot. It will be one year this September, the end of the month, and light poles are still not installed. Slide 14, that's a culvert that's behind my home. That is unfinished, unleveled. There's construction debris all in the pipe and in and around it. That was a Phase II construction there that was supposed to be done, but now the builder has moved on to Phase IV, V, and VI. So that probably needs to be on the city inspector list as an item on their punch list. Slide 15, that's a depiction from the city plan. It's a specification for the walking trails. The walking trails, some are there, some aren't. They're incomplete, and in some areas, and in other areas here recently, they started behind egress, but they decided to start a quarter of the way down the trail, drop the blade of the bulldozer, and go down six inches and start to drop rock. So just as a side note, that started probably Friday afternoon. They worked through the weekend, the holiday, into today, and work started at around 6:30 a.m. Several doors that I knocked on, just talking to the folks over the weekend, they were pretty peeved because 6:30 in the morning, I hear a bulldozer going through their backyard blazing the trail. But as you see there, you know, the rock, six inches of rock, the fabric that's supposed to go there, it's six foot wide, two foot wide on either side. That's an eight-foot-wide trail, basically, and it's inconsistent throughout their neighborhood. Slide 16, the picture on the left is a trail behind my home. That's not even one inch of gravel. All they did was rake it to make it look a little better, but it's not done to specification. The picture to the right is the trail I was talking about earlier about egress. Whoever surveyed it, like I said, they started a quarter of the way down, they dropped their flags all the way down to the end, and they continued working that trail, like I said, over the weekend. Slide 17, you see a picture there, some of the trails that are not done correctly. There's overgrowth, the weeds grow through. The picture in the middle there is a picture of a trail that starts in the beginning of the neighborhood that does not have a handicap ramp leading up to that trail like all the other trails, other sidewalks and trails in the neighborhood. And the last picture there, that's a trail in the new part of Phase V and VI that's beginning to erode based off of the amount of rain we had over the last few months. Slide 18, those are the athletic fields that Ms. Rose explained earlier. So those are the two locations they're supposed to be at, one in the front of the neighborhood and one in the middle of the neighborhood, and those are non-existent at this time. I'm going to jump to slide 20 there, just so you have an idea of some of the weeds that were grown in some of the backyards or the fields that backed up to the backyard of some of the homes. There's a gazebo, there's several located throughout the community. Those are all overgrown, they're not accessible. Slide 21, that's a picture of the construction debris. There's quite a bit behind my home and the homes that are to my left and right. Everything from construction blocks where cement trucks offloaded the rest of the cement that we're going to use for the day, lumber, the skirting that goes around a construction site is halfway buried into some of the vegetation there. Slide 22, that particular curb is in front of, between my home and my neighbor's home. That's been like that for the last year. Still hasn't been corrected. The sediment, when it rains, goes into that storm drain and then directly into Lake Mead. Slide 23, we have a playground set that was installed. Went over there the following day just to take a look at it with my grandkids, and there's a bolt missing off one of the cables there. And I don't think that's been rectified yet. The pickleboard court, roughly a year, year and a half, it's starting to, the paint's starting to peel, so I don't know if they applied it correctly, if the paint was applied correctly or not, but that's a deficiency. And below that, it's an actual, I think it's an electrical cord from where the lamps are supposed to be connected to once they install it. So that's in the beginning of Abbey Road. That's definitely a safety hazard. Slide 24, that's our mailbox area. Every time it rains, that whole mailbox area floods. I don't know if it's because of the grating or in and around. I can probably assume that just by looking at it, or it's the pitch of the cement, the way they poured it. And then slide 25, there's some other amenities that were listed and promised to us when we purchased our homes. So the athletic fields, like we talked about, multi-use lawn, there's a community dock that's supposed to be installed in the last phase of our development, and then there's a kayak access ramp to Lake Mead supposedly, which is, again, supposed to be installed. Beyond that, beyond those slides there, is the petitions that everyone signed, making them aware of the deficiencies. Like Daniel said and Ms. Rose said, we went door to door, explained to them. A lot of folks had things to say to us, and other folks weren't aware of all the things that were not being accomplished, deficient, or incomplete construction. So now they're aware. So you have all those signatures there. And then page 39 is the letter sent by the HOA to us stating that we incorrectly cut uh, we incorrectly cut, um, that patch, uh, field behind the homes that I showed you earlier in the picture, um, and that they were gonna charge us for it. And when we spoke to the folks cutting and cleaning up the area, they said they were hired by the city, so, uh, don't know what's gonna happen there, but, um, none of the trees that, that the developer planted, uh, I physically went out there, we'll cut down to inspect and make sure that nothing was cut that should not have been cut. They're all still there, the saplings are there with the poles in the ground and the, and the, uh, retention lines holding, holding those saplings up. Um, again, like, like, uh, I spoke to y'all last time, uh, looking for guidance, looking for that leadership, you know, um, I think we're getting down to the wire. I think personally, it's my personal opinion, to where the developer's almost sold all of his lots, and he's about to cut ties and, and leave us with a bunch of stuff that we're gonna be responsible for and have to pay for in, in the long run. So, uh, again, uh, I know a lot of you spoke to us after the last city council meeting. I, I will stay behind. Hopefully, we can, we can speak to a few and get some broader guidance and, and maybe some feedback. I know the, uh, uh, the city attorney came up and spoke last time a little bit, so, um, again, just trying to do what we're supposed to do. We spent a lot of money on, on these homes, but, uh, if no one does anything, then, uh, we're gonna be left with stuff that we don't want and that we paid for. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Diana Ramos, 125 Abbey Road, representing the Preserve at Lake Mead regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I hope you have a wonderful weekend. Um, as a very wise person told me one time, in a whisper in my ear, you are very good with analogies, so the last time I give you one, this is gonna be very different for the one I give you. Um, I'm gonna talk to you guys about being the parents, all of you. And, uh, Preserve and LLC and, um, Development Worth, they are the parent, they are actually the, uh, the parents. And, um, actually, let me get that back. You are the parents, they are the twin children, the teenager children, and you have also a younger kid, our community. So you ask these teenage kids to clean their rooms, and I bet every single one of you know what I'm talking about when you tell your children, "Clean your rooms." And they come and clean the rooms, and you make your inspection, and you look at the room, it looks kinda clean, but the little children is washing the twins, putting everything under the bed. Am I right? They do that. So that's what these people are doing for Development and LLC Preserve. They hiding everything under the bed because they don't want you two guys to see what they're doing. They pretending they're cleaning, but they're not. And we're getting tired of that. So now, because the little kid go to the parents and tell them, "They're being bullying me. They're telling me that if I come to you, I'm gonna get in trouble." Sending us letters telling us that we are in charge of their responsibility. So the little children is gonna call grandma, and I'm gonna use grandma as different channels because I am tired of it. We're all tired of being here, asking, again, please, we cannot get stuck with their responsibilities. They took our money, and I wish that many of you had the opportunity to come and listen to, and I'm talking about now the construction company, Worth Company. They have a different nickname, Worthless. And as some of the residents, they own their homes, the horrible stories that we heard from them. And I'll give you one example. I met the most beautiful couple, elderly couple in the neighborhood, who sold their farm and paid cash to get their home built to be closer to the nephews and nieces and their grandchildren. Now the wife has a kidney failure because the issues they have with the construction. And they still begging to them to have their home been fixed the way they were promised. Why we have to deal with people like that? Because they just, only thing they have in their mind is money and money, and I don't care about you guys anymore. So there, for their fact, they're lying to you and they're lying to us about they promising something and they're not doing it. Because the only care, of that, what they care about there at this point is money in their pocket and moving to the next one. So if nothing gets issued, I start making my resources, and I can start calling channels three, 10, 13, in all the seven cities until they, something gets, get done. Because we need to endure our homes and be trust, to get the trust from people like you guys to be able to say, "We got you guys. We are voting citizens, and we trust you guys." Again, I asking you, help us. Do not let those people get away for what they told you they're gonna do and they told us to promise us to do. Have a good night.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we'll now move to new business. Um, I'd like to take the liberty under new business, somewhere I wanna thank everyone from the Preserve that came forward and whoever put this presentation together. I've got a job for you, did a great, great job on it, uh, providing the information, the pictures and everything we need. Um, obviously, this is not, yeah, a good circumstance. What I would like to, to entertain is that we direct the manager to get with staff and our city attorney and go through the issues that are enumerated in this book. And in my opinion, we'll have, the first thing we'll have to determine is what the city does or does not have purview over as far as enforcement. And that's, there's only certain things, you know, the city has limitations because citizens, uh, have their rights also, but this is very, very well put together and documented. So I think we can start there and look at each one of these violations or, or, um, contended violations and determine which ones we may or may able, may or may not have the authority or ability to enforce. And then, once we do that, if you could also provide what options we do have available to us, what can we avail ourselves of? Is it a matter of sending notices out and it's 30 days or 60 days? And you can see, we send notices out. Uh, but I would like to have a total accounting, so basically, we can determine, or more importantly, the residents can determine what we can or cannot do by law, which would at least provide you with the information as to what we can do and then what you may have to do on your own as far as legal action is concerned. So I don't know if we need that in the form of a motion or if just the direction is fine. So what do you think, Mr. Manager? Or I should, I'll, I'll direct it to our city attorney. Does that need to be in a form of a motion or a request?
Um, there needs to be some record of all of city councils' dissent.
Okay, so I kinda chunked it out there, but I need somebody to put a motion together. Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Uh, I don't have it exactly worded, but, um,
That was a lot.
Yeah, exactly. That, I don't know whether, motion as per what the mayor just said, would, basically to request the city, the city manager, staff, and the city attorney to review the documents provided by the Preserve at Lake Mead and, um, try to determine what, if any, actions that the city can take to remediate these issues. That, I, I do have one kinda general question that maybe the, the city manager or the city attorney can ask. When we issue a conditional use permit, uh, conditions are attached to the conditional use permit ordinarily, and typically, in most of the cases, a lot of the cases, the conditional use permit is issued to a business or to a residence or to something, and if the conditions get repeatedly violate, the city has the authority to go back in there and revoke that conditional use permit effectively, if it's a business, shutting down that business. In this particular case, since the conditional use permit was issued to a development, if the conditions are not followed and repeated warnings do not rectify the situation, I mean, you can't go in there and tear the houses down. I mean, you can't go in there and, and, and basically go back to square one, so I would just like to know, once again, going back to what you said about what the city's, um, potential recourse is in a situation like that, and then concurrently with that, do we need to look at the conditional use permitting process as it applies to subdivisions so that if we don't have enough teeth to enforce the conditions, that maybe we can revise the language or revise how it's done so that the teeth are there so that we don't run into this problem in the future?
Councilman Fossett?
I, I'll move on seconding the motion, and I gotta tell you, I, I, I just gotta make a comment because this book is pretty much spot on to what I know because I was in the neighborhood, rode the neighborhood, talked to the folks out there, rode my truck for probably two hours. And enough's enough. We gotta find a way in this city to fix this problem and to find a way for this problem to not ever come for another neighborhood. That's what's gonna happen here. And I think, John, you hit the nail on the head because this is unacceptable. I, I just couldn't think that if I paid this kinda money for a home in a nice, beautiful neighborhood, that, I mean, this, I, I won't say anymore other than I'm just appalled with this. I think this is, we've heard these people come here five, six times now, and I don't know this developer, but I'd be hard pressed to have him come in front of me again and get a vote. I can tell you that right now.
So we got a motion on the floor in a second. Councilman Johnson?
I've, I've gotta make a comment. I, I remember this very, very well when we approved this facility. At the time, the question in my mind, I, I said it over and over, how do we make this developer do what he says he's gonna do by putting in the ball fields, the paths? And we, we gave him a concession to build these houses closer together and not put them, you know, the distance, just like the folks said, with all of these amenities going in and the amenities what made it worthwhile. So I agree, and I, we do need to take care of this, but we also need to make sure that this doesn't happen again down the road, and make sure that we, our staff and our lawyers and our people make us understand how we can make this not happen again, because they have a legitimate complaint. First off, I want these people to fix it. The, the developer needs to finish what he started. So I'll agree 100%, but I just don't wanna, we don't need to go down this path again.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, uh, I had hit it to second it, but both of the councilmen said, was, was on my mind, and I agree with Councilman Rector, uh, what he said, we gotta make sure this don't happen no more and put something in there that we're aware of this, uh, 'cause this is sickening, just, just to see this and how hard, how many times Mr. Blue came here. Like I said, he came before COVID. He was here. A lot of people wasn't here. It's time for us to do something. And I'm talking about time for us to do it like yesterday. So when we, we go and, and the city, and the city manager get the response, I wanna respond. When I keep waiting, I think they waited long enough. They have been patient, respectable, they have done everything right. Now I think it's time for the city of Suffolk to do what's right. This is time. So whatever situation, I wanna see him explain this. If we, uh, we probably can't, but make sure his days are numbered and suffered. This is not right. This, this is totally not right, and I hope that we can find some type of solution. Might not be 100%, but we can find some, we're gonna do something right. Thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. I, I'll be very, very brief. I'd just like to thank, um, Mr. Blue and them, whoever put this band together. It's a lot of information in here, it's very good, and I think we, as council, have to really look at, uh, when, uh, developers come before, for us, we have to make sure that we can hold them responsible for what they come before us and presenting, and not come back later on and have the neighbors not, uh, being able to, uh, have what they was promised in their contracts and all, and I know some of it might be civil, but I think, uh, the council and staff have a responsibility to the people to make sure that we have things in place that will eliminate this type of situations in these new subdivisions that's being built. I think I'm strongly advocate of holding people responsible for their actions, so I strongly support the motion to go ahead and have the city manager and the city attorney to look at whatever need to be done to try and come back with an answer of correction of this situation.
Okay, we got a, uh, motion on the floor by Councilman Rector, Rector, in a second, from Councilman Fossett.
And can we, can we get some clarity there because it a bit trailed off at the end? Uh, a motion to direct the city manager and the city attorney to review the documents regarding the Preserve at Lake Mead and, and there was some chatting.
And I don't, I don't wanna get the motion, I'm not speaking for Councilman Rector, so you can correct me, but we don't wanna get too convoluted. We talk about
Okay.
possibly changing some ordinances also, and I think that's probably step two. I think step one is, let's see, let's get a extensive report as to addressing the violations, what we can, what we are allowed to address, and then what action we are able to take. I think everybody knows it's not about what we wanna do, it's about what we can do. I mean, if you wanted, you know, if you wanted to do something, you go, you know, round everybody up and put them in a hole and tell them when they get things right, we'll let them back out again, but we can't do that. So we have to determine what legal recourse we have. Uh, we've also gotta remember that Virginia is what's called a deliberative state, which means that localities can only do what they are permitted to do through the state legislature. So the state determines what powers we have to regulate certain things. So it's not a question is what we would like to do, but it's gonna be a question of what we can do. Once we determine what we can do, what recourse we have, then from there, we can see if there are opportunities to amend our ordinances, to put more teeth, if you will, into our ability to enforce those that choose not to adhere to basically the contracts that they've signed. Uh, we know what it is in some cases, if you grasp it too high. they've signed. We know what it is in some cases. If you grass it too high, you get this, you get that. But this is a fairly involved situation where you have, and I don't remember really encountering this in the many years I've been here, where we've had a developer, not with just an isolated case of one or two or three things that are rectified and then they're okay, we've had some, but to the extent that the folks have been harmed at the preserve at Lake Mead, I don't think we've ever had a developer that's had this many issues. So I think we need to look at all these, consult with the city attorney. Let's determine what the violations are that we can address and what recourse we have and then we can see what options we have. Once we do that as far as ordinance is concerned. So back to the original motion, I can see that look on your face. She's giving me that look my mother used to give me and that wasn't good. I think the motion needs to be to direct this city, but I'm not making it for Mr. Rector.
This role was involved.
Okay, okay, you got it?
Somebody say something.
Yeah, hold on, hold on a second. Get me all, get me all flustered up now. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the motion should be to direct the city manager and the attorney to review the material that was presented to us by the residents of the preserve at Lake, Lake Mead and review potential corrective action avenues that the city can pursue. Going back to your point, I think what that uncovers will determine whether we need to go to the second step, which is reviewing how the conditional use permit ordinances is applied to developments. Are you good now, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the clarity.
Awesome. Still a motion, so we need a.
Still a motion and still a second.
So we still need a vote.
All right, any further discussion? Well, here are none. Council members prepared to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any other additions to tonight's agenda?
No, sir.
Members of council, is there any other new business that you would like to bring forward for consideration? Hearing none, we'll now move to announcements and comments and at this time I'll ask if communications specialist Brendan Gonzalez has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members and City Manager. I'd like to kick off announcements tonight with exciting news from the Finance Department. The city of Suffolk has learned that all three rating agencies, Pitch Ratings, Moody Investor Service and S&amp;P Global Ratings have all confirmed the city's AAA rating status with a stable outlook. The AAA rating represents the creditworthiness of the city of Suffolk government-issued bonds and provides assurance that the city of Suffolk has the highest quality bonds with the least amount of risk and that both the principal and the interest on the bonds will be paid on time and in full. Congratulations to the Finance Department on this achievement. Suffolk Parks and Rec is proud to announce the 18th Annual Taste of Suffolk on Saturday, September 14th from 11:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. in downtown Suffolk. This year's festival will stretch along Main Street from Finney Avenue to Washington Street and West Washington Street to Saratoga Avenue. Main Street will showcase local independent restaurants offering signature dishes at affordable prices. Attendees can also browse a variety of goods and services from local vendors and explore a new vehicle exhibition. Festivalgoers will enjoy all-day entertainment with live music, contests, a fun zone for children and a beer garden showcasing local craft brews until 8:00 p.m. in the Courthouse Fountain Park. For more information on parking and road closures, visit tastofufficva.com. Suffolk Festivals is pleased to announce that the 46th Annual Suffolk Peanut Festival will be held October 10th through the 13th at the Suffolk Executive Airport. This year's theme is celebrating Suffolk's roots from our hearts to our boots, celebrating Suffolk's strong agricultural roots, its longstanding connection to our waterways for livelihood and leisure and the community's love for its city. This year's headlining band will be country music artist Easton Corbin. To purchase tickets or more information, visit Exciting events are happening in downtown Suffolk this fall. Join Mayor Michael Duman Thursday, September 19th at 4:00 p.m. at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts for a Downtown Suffolk Progress Report. The event will feature details on accomplishments and advancements to date from the Downtown Master Plan. The program will also highlight the path forward for future projects and goals. If you would like to attend this event, please RSVP to Deanna Trimmer at 757-514-4049 or D-Hold at sufficva.us to attend the event. Coming soon to the Downtown Festival Park, on Saturday, September 27th, a concert by the original Rondells will be held. Saturday, October 5th, a putt-putt mini golf course. Friday, October 25th, concert by Slap Nation. Saturday, November 9th, salute to service, 5K and One Mile Fun Run. December 1st through the 31st, an ice skating rink will be held at the park presented by Glow Fiber. Other happenings in downtown Suffolk to include Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00 Suffolk's Farmers Market, September 10th through the 14th, the Fourth Annual Suffolk Plain Air Festival. Saturday, September 21st, Masquerade Murder Mystery at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. Friday, September 27th, the Purple Piano Prince Tribute Band will also be held at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. Saturday, October 5th will be the Peanut Fest Parade. October 11th, 18th and the 25th, Friday Night Fright Tour Film Series will be held at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. Saturday, October 19th, the Hurrah Players will present Cinderella at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. And lastly, starting October 26th through December 6th, Suffolk Art League's annual juried exhibition will be held at the Suffolk Art Gallery. For more information on any of the events mentioned, please visit downtownufficva.com. And of course, on your screen are the various ways residents can stay connected to the city of Suffolk happenings. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Well, now moving on to announcements from council, Shelley, Councilmember Shelley Butler Barlow, you're up. Get you hooked up here.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Good to be back. Missed everybody last time. Sorry about that. I'll try not to let it happen again. Let's see, where to start? I wanna go back to our first non-agenda speaker, the Vice President of the Master Gardeners, talking about the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office. And I, you know, we've had this conversation a lot. The elevator has been down for nearly a year and I know that city staff has been providing support to the extension staff to haul stuff up to the third floor and down again. But we really need to try to find an alternative space for them. They are not able to conduct their programs. Master Gardeners are really, really important part of the services they offer, but there are many, many other services that they offer. They do 4H, they do community outreach, they provide soil sampling services for local farmers. And their office is not accessible and we need, again, I know it's, I know the city can't manufacture elevator parts, but we've gotta get that office functional. It's a requirement that we do that, so.
Mr. Manager, would you like to address that?
Yes.
Put a little something working.
Talking with the deputy city manager, they've been working with.
Andrea.
Yes. And they're looking at the facility downtown where the Virginia pilot building.
Oh, okay. All right. Excellent. Excellent. Good. I'm glad that there's progress there. Like I said, I know it's not news, but it just seems like it's been a long time since we've addressed that. So thank you for that.
And the elevator should be, once the part getting completed, we're saying by the end of the year.
I am sympathetic on the unavailability of parts. It's a, it's a, it's a problem. So, but anyway, thank you. Thank you for the update. So I'm glad we're addressing that. Also, I think they both left, but I would like to say thank you to Paul Rattell and Robert Lewis who conducted along with their staff a community outreach meeting, two meetings in the Oakland community about the upcoming Stormwater Sanitary Sewer Water Project. And we didn't have as good a turnout as we hoped, but the folks that came out asked good questions and got good answers. And I just appreciate the time that staff spent doing that outreach and I look forward to the success of that project as it gets going. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big improvement to that section of the city. And I, again, appreciate staff's dedication to that. The last thing I would like to do in honor of Labor Day, I just wanna leave everybody with a quote in my, for my closing tonight, and this is from Frances Perkins, who was the Secretary of Labor under FDR, the first woman appointed to a presidential cabinet. And she was also the author of the Social Security Act, which is important to all of us and especially, you know, all of us who labor, which I think is pretty much everybody. But Ms. Perkins said, "The people are what matter to government and a government should aim to give all the people under its jurisdiction the best possible life." Thanks.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. I'll be brief again tonight. First, I would like to say to Officer Jackson, I was left early last council meeting and wasn't here at the end of the meeting. And I just want to thank him and say congratulations to him on his retirement from the police department and 28 years of service to the council. He started serving the councils about the same time that I got elected and he's been, he was very dedicated and a very hardworking young man. And I just wanted to say congratulations to him after I wasn't able to stay at the last meeting until he was recognized. So I, tonight, I just want to recognize Officer Jackson again for his service to the citizen and to the council. Also, I'd like to thank all the people that came out tonight to voice your concerns and I want you to know that we do listen, we hear you. And that's what you have the opportunity to come. Every council meeting, if you've got that five minutes, you wanna present something, that's the reason why you have the time to come and present your case and let council know what you are thinking. So don't feel like you are being a pest because that's not, you're not, that's your right. You have the opportunity to come in and address the council at each meeting. So please don't be afraid to do that. Also, I'd like to say that school is back in and we are hoping that our kids will have a safe year in school and the teachers and all the staff. And, you know, it's a sad thing to look at the news today and see what had happened already. First week of school, shooting already in school. And that is something I'm sure that all the parents and all of us are concerned about, the safety of our children that's going to school and being able to come home at night. So I hope people that have guns, that will actually take note of being safe with them. They have safety locks as opposed to have or can get to put on them. They also have gun cabinets that they can put them in. I'm a hunter, so I have quite a few guns, but every one of them is in a locked cabinet and no one has a key but me. So I think it's a thing that we all have to be very conscious of is the safety of the children that surround guns and people that has issues and concerns that make it so easy to be able to get guns. And I think this was a 14-year-old child today that went to school and killed two teachers and two other students and I don't know how many other students that were injured. So I'm sure that wears a lot on a lot of parents, that the children are just going back to school of what could so easily happen in just a spirit of moment. So let's keep all of them in our prayers this year for their safety and concern of the schools and the safety of our schools. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Councilwoman Barlow stole my thunder. I was just gonna speak about Master Gardeners. That was it. The young, the gentleman who came up and gave the speech for the Master Gardeners is a good friend of mine, Jeff Hancock. He and his wife are both so dedicated to the program. 30 years ago, 30 years ago, I was a really young man. I was a big part of the program. And the Master Gardener program in this city has only grown and grown and done great things. I wanna thank the Virginia Cooperative Extension Service for being the one to allow it to go forward. And every year it just gets better and better. So my, my point was to ask the city manager to please make sure we deal with this. But thank you. We, I wanna make sure the program, they have been really having issues with their offices. The other things I wanna thank the preserve, all of you guys that have come out, persist, is what it takes sometimes. And let's see if we can't get you moving in a positive direction and getting that development moving in a positive direction. And with that, I'll say watch out for the tractors. They're getting ready to get on the road. They're gonna be turning in the fields. Our roads are a little tricky right now anyway, so just be very, very safe, be careful, look out for the school buses and be safe. Thank you.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also be brief. If you have not been to the Hilton Garden Inn and gone to the new restaurant that they've renovated there inside the hotel, you owe it to yourself to do it. My wife and I and some friends of ours went there the other night and had a fabulous dinner. It's a nice environment, good view of the river and whatnot. And I think they're a great addition to all the restaurant options that we have in the downtown area right now. So if you have not been downtown and had an opportunity to go out and eat in one of those fine restaurants, I would encourage you to do. So to piggyback a little bit on Councilman Bennett's comments about the schools, obviously what happened down in Georgia is a terrible tragedy, but I just wanna remind everybody that student safety extends beyond the four walls of the school building. So when you're driving down the road, be cognizant of the fact that school buses are out there. They do need to stop. They do need to pick up children. They do need to offload children. So respect the stop sign, respect the gate. If not, I believe we have a mechanism in place where we can send you a souvenir and a reminder that those kind of actions need to be taking place. And I was watching a news report, they were talking about Miami and all the incidences of people blowing by school buses and whatnot where they were offloading and picking up children. And they came to the same conclusion basically that we did and they've installed cameras on their buses. So, you know, we were kind of ahead of the curve on the state allowing us to be able to do that. We got reminded again tonight with the issuance of the Stormwater Bonds, just how important that AAA bond rating is to the city. Every penny that we save in an interest payment on a bond that the city issues is a penny that we have to put to another project or another need within the city. So congratulations to the mayor and the manager and everybody else who is responsible for keeping that AAA rating up. The only thing I've really attended since the last meeting is today, they had the groundbreaking for the Port 460 project out there along the crossroad of 58 and 460. Having the governor there and the Secretary of Transportation and all the other folks that were there to speak really drove home the point that Suffolk is part of a much larger community. You know, the regionalism has stretched out and is touching Suffolk in a very dramatic way. And whether you are a fan of the project or not a fan of the project, the project is here and I think it's up to this council and the city and everybody to make sure that if your view of this thing was that we got handed a bowl of lemonades, of lemons, that we now turn this thing into a nice glass of lemonade and make it beneficial for the city as a whole. And then lastly, the holiday tour downtown is coming back. A group of citizens have gotten together and are putting that together and I'm excited about that and can't wait for it to happen. And with that, I will say good night.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank Dr. Rose and Mr. Blue and all the citizens from the Lake Mead Preserve for coming out and Master Gardener, all the speakers who came out tonight. Again, piggyback off what Councilman Bennett said, you know, you're not bothering us. That's why you put us here, to listen to your concerns and try to address the concerns. So anytime you have an issue, and I can speak for everybody up here on the daisies, it's, you know, if you have an issue, please feel free to call any of us because we don't mind answering the phone. We don't mind getting back with you. We don't mind coming out to see you. I've been out to the reserve, preserve and met with Mr. Blue and Dr. Rose and we rode around and I agree, there are some, there are some things that need to be done and corrected. The council have taken upon themselves tonight to put forth a motion for the city manager and the city attorney to take a look at the document that was well put together and see what we can do legally. And that's the first step. But please know that we, we hear you and continue to come out. When something is wrong, continue to reach out to us because that's what we're here for. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Fossett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. If you could, Mr. Manager, there's a lot of vacant fields.
If you could, Mr. Manager, there's a lot of vacant fields, lots, that are, the grass is just six feet tall, and some of those need to be cut down. We hold the citizens of Suffolk their feet to the fire when they don't cut their grass in their facilities. These vacant lots need to be looked at and have the owners of those lots get people in there to cut them down. 17 is a good example. I could probably point out of many more as I'm driving, and I do a lot of driving. So, as I see them, it comes to mind is, why is the grass that high when it shouldn't be? That's where draws mosquitoes and all kinds of rodents to hide and house out in them. So, we need to go ahead and ask these folks that have these lots, have our city inspectors take a look around and see if we can get some help to get these places cleaned up. Just so you know it, you heard the taste of Suffolk's coming, but also the Peanut Fest is coming. I want you to keep in mind, on the 11th, which is Friday, it's October 11th, the shrimp feast will be coming that's hosted at the Peanut Fest. It's a fantastic night. If anybody needs tickets, usually Mr. Dooman has some available. I have some available, or we can get tickets for you if you're interested in going. It's a fantastic night, the fellowship, have a good time, listen to some good music. I think we're going to have a good band this year. I forget exactly who it was, the Island Boys. I think it's the Island Boys this year. So, if you get a chance, come on out. I didn't get a chance to say something to Officer Jackson, but, you know, the part I'll miss, and he's always been a character, is he swings my door open every other Thursday and puts my packet in there. And so, I won't have that opportunity, but you're going to have to take and come by and see me occasionally every other Thursday. So, I appreciate that. I think John hit the nail on the head tonight, Port 460. There's been a lot of yanks up and down about whether it's going to be good, bad, or ugly. I think tonight, this afternoon, was just a great event that could prove to be one of the best gems that came to Suffolk, whether people believe it, like it, don't like it, whatever. I think it's going to bring a very large number of jobs. There'll be a lot of road corrections out there done. So, I think that, you know, just stay tuned. You know, maybe after a while, you'll see some good things happening out there. I think they touched on it, schools open. I have to agree, Mr. Bennett, that today, that tragedy of school shootings is just somewhere, I don't know why it happens, what the reason is for it. But the other part is, is those nice flashing lights that are on the school zones that come on in the mornings and the afternoons. Please pay attention to them, because we don't want a vehicle being hit, a child being hit, or anybody in the school zones. So, if you would, just pay a little extra attention, just cut the speed down as you're going through, and it'll make your transition easy. I want to thank you, I want to thank everybody tonight for coming out, everybody. It's always a pleasure for people to come up here. I always like to thank that you're coming up here and telling us the problem, and hopefully we come up with a solution. That's where we got to really be hitting on things. It's nice to tell us, but I know you sit out there and you wonder, what can they do to help us get to the solution? So, that's what we got to work on, because there's boundaries for us to work in. And so, we're just going to go ahead, and I think the motion stands for itself. I think we'll get some answers. We've got a lot of talent here that should be able to come up with something. Other than that, we had a good meeting tonight. Thank you all, and thank you, Mayor, and see you next time.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Blue and Ms. Blue for being persistent, coming out, knowing that what was wrong, something wasn't right. And the city of Suffolk is too good of a city to let things like that happen. Thank the whole community. I'd like to see that. Like one of the councilmen said, I love to see you come up and talk, because we can't get everything right, but we can work together. That's what's important. So, thank you all again for coming out. Unfortunately, I had someone live in Huntsville, and it's Doug Jackson. He was a good friend, and he was one of the hearts of Huntsville, born and raised. He passed on, he attended the funeral last Thursday, so all my condolences to his family. 460, can't too much be said that was, has, been said about 460, what a project. But in the end, they're looking at the future, so many things are going to happen, that a lot of things we don't know about, but it will happen. I think today proved that how important the city of Suffolk is. I mean, it was unbelievable that the people that came and who came and who invested in our city. So, with that, I'll say God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. Just a couple items, really, the last couple of weeks have been kind of quiet, but we've got a bunch coming up for sure. On the 26th of August, I met the superintendent of our school system, Colonel Fred Cherry, for the first day of school, and took a tour of Fred Cherry. Then we also went to Nansson River High School after that, just for the first day of school with the kids and the teachers. And, you know, it was pretty uplifting to see everybody's attitudes, and I wish them the best for a very productive school year. And Port 460 today, we had the governor, Secretary of Transportation, the manager of the port, and about 50 or 60 other people. It was a pretty big crowd. And that is a large project. And that project also lends itself, the zoning lends itself also, to technology and manufacturing, not strictly warehouses. So, there are uses that property is also appropriate for, and this will be a long-term project. I took a little bit of extra time to talk about the Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund and the $3.1 million that we're fortunate enough to receive, because during the deliberation of this project several years ago, I felt like it could, not necessarily, but could provide an opportunity to get ahead of a road issue, which is very difficult to do, because funding normally doesn't happen until you already have congestion. Well, this is one time where we'll be able to actually improve a road before we have congestion. So, we're not being reactive, we're being proactive, but that's a matter of money. Keeping in mind that with or without that Port 460 project, the traffic was going to come to 460, because it's strictly generated from the business that comes out of the port. There's only three ways out of Hampton Roads, it's 64, 58, and 460. And we've got 58 and 460. So, the traffic is coming, and according to the projections from the Hampton Roads Plan and Transportation Organization, it won't be long before that truck traffic would actually be doubled on 460. So, that $30.1 million and the $6.6 million that the developer profited, plus the $1 million that we received from the port, puts us at about a 47% funding on that total project, which is just amazing. So, when you look at it all, especially the economic impact, is going to be phenomenal. And we're talking about several thousand jobs, they're talking about 9,000 jobs while it gets done, but reasonably speaking, we're probably talking about a couple of thousand jobs that are not going to be, there'll be fairly well-paying jobs. And most important, we'll have public transportation to those jobs also, because it's not that far from downtown. And so, we'll be able to provide public transportation to those individuals who could probably benefit from those jobs the most. The tax revenue for the city, I mean, I can't imagine, I think I spoke to our assessor once, but I think reasonably speaking, we're probably looking in the $8 to $10 million a year between real estate tax and the tax that businesses will generate through their operations. And all these things, that tax revenue is what allows us to do the projects that everybody wants to do. You know, we want access, we want better roads, we want parks and rec, we want to be able to pay our law enforcement, we want to be able to pay our teachers, we want to be able to pay our firefighters better. We want to replace schools. I mean, schools are millions of, well, you know, you're lucky to do a school for 50 or 60 million dollars now. So, the question is, you know, where does the money come from to do that? It's either generated through commerce, through retail, or it's on the taxpayers' back. And I don't think everybody wants their taxes increased. I mean, we've been fortunate enough over the last several years that Suffolk is in the best financial position it has ever been in in its life. And because of that, we've been able to keep providing the services that we've been providing at the level that we've been providing them. And last year, we were able to reduce the tax rate. The year before that, we were able to offer tax relief. And the year before that, we reduced the tax rate as well. So, we're the only Hampton Road city that I can think of that has provided tax relief in three out of the last four years, and that's the last three years. So, you know, I'm convinced that this will be a world-class project. I mean, we're talking about an investment of probably 600 to 650 million dollars, and it'll be over about a 10-year period. But it's a substantial investment in our city. And where we are as a regional player and how we're perceived by the other cities in Hampton Roads, I mean, I come across it all the time, you know, I'll run, and I know all the mayors on a first-name basis. And I hear often, you know, comments like, "You guys got it going on in Suffolk." And with the manager's help and the staff and everybody up on this dais, we are in a very enviable position. And like I said, Port 460, the governor couldn't have been, the governor, Secretary of Transportation helped make it happen. Senator Jordan was instrumental in us getting this T5 fund, and we're not going to stop. I mean, we're going to work with the port and also see if we can pursue federal funds in the same way we try to pursue regional, state, and federal funds as far as, you know, our parks and rec is concerned, as far as our school systems are concerned. You know, we're very, very active in trying to identify and pursue any revenue sources we can possibly come up with. And because of our financial position, we are prepared to react if we ever have an opportunity for a particular grant or funding that requires matching funding. We have that funding available in a capital reserve plan that we can pull right out. So, with that being said, that's enough of that. I'm going to go ahead and go to my quote of the night, and that is from, I'm going to butcher this name, Jerome Ramesh. He's an Indian politician that graduated from MIT. And that quote is, "There's never a good time for tough decisions. There will always be an election or something else. You have to pick courage and do it. Governance is about taking tough, making tough, even unpopular decisions." And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
A motion to adjourn from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams.
Second at me.
Second from Councilman Williams, they can discuss the motion. Here and none, council members prepared to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of 8 to 0.
This meeting stands adjourned.